It's 5:30, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, April 6th, 2020. Carl, can you give me a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley. Ronan.
Here.
Lunsman. Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunstness.
President.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I didn't hear from Lunsman. Is he not on this call?
I don't see or hear him either.
Okay. First order of business will be to approve last week's meeting minutes from March 30th and the special meeting for April 1st. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Johnson. Carl, give me a roll call vote since we've got people on the technology.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the open forum. We've got a guest speaker here today, Aaron, from the United Way. Josh Rife indicated that he had invited him last week to talk a little bit about the United Way's response to the COVID crisis. Aaron, you've got the floor. Make sure that your little green light is on the microphone there.
All right, thank you very much for having me here today. And personally, just want to say thank you for what you're doing. And this job that you have is tough enough as is, and it became triple D. That's tough, the last month or so. And so thank you. I know you're making a number of tough decisions that aren't easy to make, and that will continue into the foreseeable future. Councilman Rife asked me to present on the nonprofit response that has been taking place. United Way, I've always said, kind of has a 30,000-foot view of what's going on in the nonprofit world, especially here within Northeast South Dakota. And just like the business community, nonprofits are affected differently, depending on what services they're providing. You talk about a Salvation Army. They are really kind of at the tip of the spear right now when it comes to basic needs. They're seeing an influx of people starting to walk in scared about rental assistance, utility assistance, and also basic needs such as food. And so we're certainly going to try to help them with some of the uptick in business that they see. But then there's also the nonprofits that, you know, you have to think about how it's affecting their daily life. The YMCA is another one. In talking with Mike Quast the other day, he said 12% of their membership is not paying at this particular point. That's something that they can live with for a bit, but eventually fixed costs are fixed costs, and they got to pay for that. And so as this continues to go on into the future, they anticipate those memberships continuing to decrease and fixed costs continuing to be there. And so they're watching that as well. Another interesting one is RideLine, of course, a city-state entity as well, you know, averages about 400 rides throughout the course of a day. Tomorrow, they are scheduled for 20 rides. And, you know, their funding formula is based on number of rides given. Now, of course, the state is talking about how to adjust those things as well. But what's been interesting, though, is we call our agencies together about every other week just to kind of discuss what's happening and where we can be of assistance. And what we're finding is creative ways that people are helping one another. With Meals on Wheels program, they're losing some of their volunteers just for, you know, that door-to-door visit. People don't want to do that, and a number of their volunteers are a little older as well in that category that should probably be staying home as well. And so because of some of the drop in ridership, RideLine has picked up those deliveries. And so kind of a quick, simple way to make sure people are continuing to get paid, but also provide an ancillary service that they weren't originally scheduled for. So in sticking with the example of Meals on Wheels, the Meals on Wheels here are made by Avera in their kitchen. And if and when we hit kind of that peak moment, and Avera is being, you know, there is potential that it would be shut down just for assisting in the pandemic, that means their kitchen gets shut down as well. So other nonprofits that have commercial kitchens are looking to step up and help with that. And so it's a lot of the preparation for what's happening next, just like the business community, just like other entities are out there. Right now, I would say nonprofits are okay. However, they're waiting for what six weeks looks like from now, what two months looks like from now, just like the rest of us are as well. One of the areas that we thought that we could assist with is taking some of that financial burden off nonprofits. And so today, we released the COVID-19 Relief Fund for not-for-profits in our region, so within Northeast South Dakota. And we partnered with our foundation for a leadership gift of $40,000. And then also the Aberdeen Community Foundation, who partnered with the Knight Foundation, who gave another leadership gift. And then a couple of community partners that we work with extensively, 3M being one of those leadership gifts as well, and Dakota Bank. And I'm proud to say, at this point, where we just officially launched it today, we have over $100,000 in commitments at this point. Again, this fund will be utilized by not-for-profits. It's not designed for individual assistance to come to United Way to help out with basic needs, but it's to make sure that the nonprofits that have the boots on the ground and that are facing some of these issues head-on have the resources so they can do the work they are intended to do and not have to worry about some of that financial burden there. That's a brief summary, but I'd open up to questions by any of the council members.
Sounds good. Aaron, first of all, thanks for coming. And, you know, I think that I can speak on behalf of most of us when I say that we're really glad to see kind of the way that your proactive approach has already kind of begun to cover some of these problems as they're occurring and before they've even occurred. So any questions from any of the council members that are sitting here? Councilman Rife.
Yeah, is the Salvation Army still delivering lunches and doing that route? Or have they slowed that down because the schools are now doing that as well?
Yeah, because of the schools and the Boys and Girls Club have picked up that portion of that. Salvation Army initially started that. And the reason the schools and the Boys and Girls Club are a little bit more of a natural fit for this is because they're part of the federal food program. So the free and reduced lunches, and they relax some of those guidelines as well. So it's that they're getting federal reimbursement for that, whereas the Salvation Army, that was peer donations and money coming out of their coffers. And so Salvation Army is transitioning where the food will, food boxes, they'll be the primary source for some of the basic need stuff such as food.
I know that you had sent an email kind of outlining the COVID-19 Relief Fund, but for the people that might be watching and listening and the rest of us in this room, what is the process if a person wanted to contribute to that fund?
Yeah, you know, this first week is just basically getting that information out there, that this fund has been developed. It's similar to funds that are currently happening around the state. I've seen funds with, you know, a couple thousand dollars to multimillion-dollar funds that are out there. And with that, we've asked a group of our board members, but also city members as well, to review essentially our grant process that we have. We're trying to keep this as simple as possible, especially for those United Way agencies that we have a working relationship with. We don't want this to be a 15-page document. We want it to be about a one-page document. Tell us what you're doing, how you're going to do it. And then, you know, six months from now, tell us how you spent those dollars as well. And so if you go to our website, uwnsd.org, we have a COVID site right there to, you know, potentially donate to, but then there's also the application process there as well. Also, for those that are interested in donating to this, you can donate to our PO Box, which is 1065, or there is drop sites at Dakota Bank, Great Western Bank, and Plains Commerce Bank as well. You can just go through the drive-through there.
Sounds great. Any council members on our Zoom connection have any questions for Mr. Johnson? I think we're good. Well, first, once again, Aaron, I really appreciate you coming in. And Schultz, not Johnson, I don't know where I got that from, looking over at Councilman Johnson, I guess. Schultz, sorry about that, Aaron. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Again, just thank you to the community. And I want to stress that this is open up to all not-for-profits. You know, there's a number of IRS designations that are not-for-profits. So if you're meeting the need, again, let us know. There is a formal application process, and that will be reviewed, and we'll try to be as transparent as possible on this. And so, you know, this is something that we didn't plan for either, but we're adapting to the needs that are out there. And so I want to thank Councilmember Rife for stepping up, and he's also going to sit on that committee too, and he can keep the city abreast of what is going on with that fund as well.
Sounds good, Aaron. Thank you much for what you're doing and for coming here today. And I think that it's really reassuring for me, at least, to see, you know, kind of the gears moving behind the scenes a little bit and knowing that so many good people are, you know, stepping up and doing the right thing to get this thing, to get us through this thing and the challenging days that are ahead. So thank you very much, Aaron.
Thank you for your time.
And Fallon, I think since your potential topic here doesn't fall squarely within ordinance number three of COVID-19, I think maybe the open forum might be the best chance for you to share your input on the effect of this thing. So grab a seat there and you can have the floor.
Well, as Aaron stated, thank you so much for all of your public service and for your dealing with all of this right now. It's certainly not a position I don't think anybody envies. So thank you for your service. The main concern that I have, I don't think it goes without, are, it's a surprise to anyone, I have Revive Salon and Spa here on Main Street. And I would just ask that you would consider, reconsider the language that is being put into the addendum for the ordinance. Initially, two weeks ago at the meeting, it was brought up with, I believe, Luanne Cunningham, a concern around unemployment. And for anyone listening, if there's any salon owners that need help, I'm more than happy to help and show some different options and solutions. The information that was given was not accurate. There are lots of options as far as unemployment, especially now with President Trump's stimulus package. And so that was the initial concern around the languages with salon and spas. Then last week, we went into the safety and into making sure that we were practicing social distancing, sanitation, and then that became the concern. And so what started as an economic concern turned into more of the safety concern. And as it's been stated, I believe, I don't know who said it earlier, but the safety procedures that we practice at Revive Day Spa, not only prior to COVID, but now since COVID has happened to us, we have adopted a whole new set of procedures. We have all of our procedures documented, and they're posted everywhere socially, on emails. We have people, I go live once a week and inform everyone, and we are inspected by the state of South Dakota monthly prior to any of this happening. And so although I do absolutely respect the position of all of the councilmen, and again, I don't envy any of your positions, I do ask that you consider if we're going to start cherry picking industries and businesses, that we consider all. If we're going to allow, and I don't have anything against or I'm not, if we're going to do something, I will respect your position, but then let's do it for everyone. If we're going to have economic, this affecting us economically in the community, we are a community of small businesses. And if we're going to have the argument that daycares can be open because they're serving in their parents or in the medical fields, that's exactly the industry that we need to concern ourselves with. That's the breeding ground. And so we're going to have parents drop their kids off at daycares, expose other children. Half of my employees are taking their kids to these daycares right now, and those daycares are requiring them to continue paying. If I close my business, if I'm mandated to close against Governor Noem's executive order to allow small businesses to operate under constitutional rights, if I'm going to be mandated at a local level to have to close my doors and continue paying my employees, how am I going to continue? Furthermore, we have property taxes right on the corner. Have we thought as a city how that's going to happen with these small businesses? So my concern, my question to all of you is, I will respect the decision, whatever decision is made, and I will follow the law. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I've had a business in Aberdeen now going on 13 years. I would hate for that to come to an end because we're not considering the best interest of everyone in mind. To cherry pick, to start at an economical level of concern, and to end on a health or whatever it is that we're amending and putting language in that we've just chosen, that isn't even referenced with accurate information around unemployment, the very least we can do is get the right information. And again, if any salon owners need help, I have applied, and I have gotten verification that I am eligible for those programs, and that I am going to get funding. And I'm more than happy to share that information. But the last thing that we need to be doing right now is closing businesses and shutting people down without any answers or without any solutions. So I'd ask that you would consider that. And I also would like to know from the councilmen, why aren't we following Governor Noem's executive orders for small businesses? She has said it over and over and over again. Again, today, she said it in her press release. Let the small business owners make the decisions. Let them be innovative in this time. And we have been. We are going, we do plan on doing curbside. We do plan on doing delivery. But when I work in an industry of service providers that are commissioned, I'm not really sure how I'm supposed to continue on. And if one of you has a suggestion or a solution, I'm more than happy to hear that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Fallon.
Any questions from anybody?
Yeah, has anyone got any questions from the council? Anyone on Zoom? You know, I know at first I'd been contacted by quite a lot of a contingency of individual hairdressers that were kind of saying, close us down, close us down. And it wasn't until that looked like it was really on the horizon that the opposite side of it really began to come forward. And I know that I feel like you guys have done a great job of addressing the potential health concerns through sanitization and other, and other forms of, you know, kind of following the guidance from the CDC and the State Department of Health. So I would, hopefully, the council will give some consideration to that tomorrow when we do our second vote. That includes the language. And also, it should be noted that the very first item of new business today includes a possible first reading, which would allow us to rescind individual paragraphs of the thing rather than having to continually create new ordinances that address different, I'd have to repeal and replace. So Fallon, thank you very much for coming in. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Helm?
Good comments. We definitely need to consider some of these things you've talked about.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Fallon.
Thank you.
Next order of business, old business item number, or letter A, we've got ordinance number 230303, supplementing the 2020 budget for various activities and expenses, possible second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Carl, any changes with that?
Thank you, Mayor. No changes since last week.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion for Ronan and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got consent counter items A through D, possible approval. Can I get a motion for the consent counter?
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rife. Does anyone have anything to discuss as it relates to these four items? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote on the consent counter.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to new business. We've got discussion and possible first reading ordinance 200405, also known as COVID Emergency Ordinance Number Three. Ron, you're here to tell us about that.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As the council is aware, this body has been in the process, has adopted COVID Emergency Ordinance Number One, which had two paragraphs in there regarding the social distancing requirements. Then COVID Emergency Ordinance Number Two is up for second reading, possibly tomorrow. During the discussion on COVID Number Two, it was asked whether the council could approve portions of COVID Number Two, Emergency Ordinance Number Two, and let others repeal. The answer that I told them and that I stand by is that it was an all-or-nothing approach to Number Two. Either you adopt and extend it in total, or you repeal it in total. So following that, I prepared Emergency Ordinance Number Three, which, for the most part, is identical to the language in Number Two, except there is a change in the repeal language in Number Three. And I will point that out as it was posted to the website and provided to the council. But then I would ask that, as part of this, that you permit me to amend that language. If there's a motion to approve first reading, I would ask for an amendment to that. But essentially, what the Emergency Ordinance Number Three does is in the repeal portion, it authorizes this council to appeal parts of the ordinance. So if at some point it appeared to the council that certain distancing measures were no longer necessary, it could repeal those, but keep in part those social distancing measures that it still felt were necessary. So that's the primary change in ordinance number three. And I wanted to bring that up for the council. And if it's something that the council would like that authority to be able to, again, I've been calling it a cafeteria-style ordinance, but that, this is a form, I'm sorry, this is a procedural change versus a language change to the substance of those prior distancing measures.
I move ordinance number three for first reading.
Second.
A motion from Ronan and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Wagner? Wager? Bad with names here today. Jeez Louise.
Ron, I would just maybe, for the people at home and following along here, this is, it's confusing, right? We have COVID one, two, and three. Could you maybe just talk about briefly, one, then two, and then three, and what replaces what and what will be in effect?
All right, I can. Councilmen, so ordinance number one is the ordinance that's currently in effect and was adopted and became effective last Wednesday, I believe. I'm getting my days, they're all running together here. But I believe it was last Wednesday that it was adopted, became effective April 2nd. And that provision, ordinance number one, tracked, if you'll recall more closely, Governor Noem's executive order 2020-08. And that put in place the requirement that any enclosed retail business operating as a bar, restaurant, and those similar type facilities shall not permit gatherings of more than 10 people and must have the social distancing in place. It also put in place a provision that there would not be effectively any public gatherings of 10 or more people throughout the city without sufficient space of six feet, and that they follow the CDC hygiene practices. That is the ordinance that's currently in effect. Then ordinance number two came along, and ordinance number two is the ordinance that we're seeing adopted by numerous municipalities within the city. And that ordinance identifies more clearly the types of businesses and facilities and organizations that are to be impacted, and orders that they be closed, except that they be permitted to provide curbside, takeout, those type of off-site services. And that is, that was what was adopted, I believe.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. And that will be up for second, I'm sorry, I said adopted. No, it was passed for first reading last Wednesday, and it'll be up for a second reading tomorrow night at a special meeting. And again, I'm sorry if this gets a little confusing because it is, but ordinance number two has six paragraphs, I believe. I'm sorry, I think it's seven paragraphs because it was changed. And those include the restaurants and bars, as we talked about before, but also indoor recreational facilities, pools and those types of facilities, tobacco shops, lounges, video game arcades, bowling alleys, tattoo parlors, beauty and hair salons, the social distancing prohibition as to, I'm sorry, the prohibition as to public gatherings of 10 or more people, and put in place various prohibitions and closures that would not apply to the following, and it included grocery stores, markets, retail stores that offer food, healthcare facilities, crisis shelters, daycares, and facilities necessary for first responders in public health emergency. So those types of things were continued and will be allowed by ordinance number two. And again, the only change with ordinance number three has to do with the language in ordinance number two that would require a repeal or extension of the whole. And so what number three is doing is simply modifying that last portion.
And all these versions require us to revisit them weekly?
Yeah, yes. Every special, every meeting, special or regular meeting, whatever ordinance is in effect, it will be up, will be on that agenda for possible extension. And the way that ordinance is repealed is if the council doesn't act on that and doesn't pass a resolution extending that ordinance. So that's in place for one, two, and would also be in place for three. And I would, at this time, ask that the council consider this change to, somebody would make a motion to amend ordinance number three consistent with.
Move to amend ordinance number three consistent with the email with the Redline changes that Ron forwarded to us earlier today.
Okay, and let me explain those. Thank you, I'm sorry. Let me explain those. What we did was, in looking at, the mayor had contacted me this morning and wanted to know what that would look like, the resolution for this would look like. So I was drafting it to show him, and I realized that in the drafting, it would be very difficult to accomplish the cafeteria approach that you would like. So what I've requested is that the amendment would be to create a Section A before the first bid ordained by the City of Aberdeen. And so Section A would include paragraphs one through seven. And then Section B would include the rest of the ordinance. And we've now taken the three ordinances, the three paragraphs that follow, and we've numbered those, one, two, and three. And we've made it clear then that you could, you need to affirm the continued existence of the public health emergency and the necessity of all or certain parts of the social distancing measures set forth in Section A, paragraphs one through seven. So now you can, in fact, pick and choose which of those you would want to continue and extend. To be very clear, what the council would not be able to do is add to the paragraphs that you see in one through seven. If you were to want to add to those, you would basically have to do ordinance number four and go that route. So as the process would move on, you would approve those paragraphs in number one through seven that you want to extend. And then the resolution would also then affirm all of Section B. And I think I provided copies of you, a draft, so you would see what that looks like.
I'm curious, from a councilperson perspective here, since we're about five days deep into COVID emergency ordinance number one, have you noticed an impact? I know that since we've passed this, the Millstone, the Buffalo Wings and Rings, and Perkins have all voluntarily closed their dining rooms. I also know that Rowley's, which was kind of the point of attention for a lot of this, closed entirely. And I know that And I know that at least two of the casinos have voluntarily closed. Have you guys been noticing a positive move in the right direction?
There has been, but I think there are still some places, whether it be casinos or whatever, that are still open. So, and those are more in the convenience stores, gas stations, those types of things. So while we've seen an improvement, and our numbers still continue to tick up, whether they're in Aberdeen or not, that's tough to say because they only get by county, we can't go off of that information. And I think that, you know, even the CDC is saying, you know, if you can get by, if you can stop stuff for two weeks, you can slow this virus down. Two, three weeks, that's all they're saying. And if everyone, like I say, did stay home and did nothing, which is virtually impossible because people do need groceries, people do need to seek medical care and stuff like that, but we could really slow this down. And I don't want to get to a Sioux Falls area where they're seeing theirs grow every day. And for me, that's the thing, is yeah, we have seen improvement, but what do we, but I don't think we should be lulled that everything is fine. I think we should still make sure that we're continuing to move forward with some of these things. And then the purpose of this ordinance is so as things improve, we can respond quicker in letting things open while still maintaining certain parts of it. And that's what I want out of this ordinance is more flexibility for us to ease those restrictions. And we could do that on a weekly basis. But the Aberdeen community has gotten better. It really has. I think a lot of people have stepped up.
I went out and about at lunchtime today and compared that with a week ago, and it was definitely many less people out and about, many less people frequenting retailers and restaurants and so forth. Councilman Ronean, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I would, I would make the same observation, that I think there has been, that a lot of people have been very responsible. It's my understanding we still have two bars that are operating, that they did tremendous amount of business over the weekend. So not everyone is falling into line, and unfortunately, I believe Clint is right, that this just underscores the need for us to move forward the direction that we're moving. And I'm sensitive to Ms. Helm's comments. She and I spent some time talking earlier this week, and there are going to be sacrifices that some of us needed me to make. There is going to be some pain in all of this, but we need to do it in order to prevent the spread. The New York Times just came out with an article where they discuss a study by the University of Texas, and the University of Texas calculates that Brown County has an 89% chance of having an epidemic, of us reaching epidemic proportion. Anyhow, County, by the way, is 100%. And so we need to do our duty.
Anyone else have anything to contribute?
I would just add one quick comment. And I think when we started these discussions, when we started drafting COVID number one, I think we had two Brown County incidences of COVID. Now, I checked, I think it's 13 today. And I think it's smart for us, as we've said, to try to flatten the curve as best we can. So that's my only comment, that I think we're all doing a pretty good job, yet the cases seem to increase still. I think there's more that the community can do as a total, just to keep this top of mind, so we don't turn into a epidemic scenario.
And I want to thank the citizens of Aberdeen. I know I talked to a lot of people. This is confusing because we're talking about one, two, three. We're working to get it right. And as we work to get things right, as well as provide us with flexibility to make rapid changes that we can do on a weekly basis, this will get better and the clarity will come into focus as more of this stuff. Because like I say, it is confusing, we're talking about one, two, three, and now maybe four, you know? But we're trying to react as fast as we can and try and get our ordinances right. And I just want to thank the citizens of Aberdeen for their patience. Like I say, this is not easy at all, especially on a lot of people. So thanks for the citizens being, A, stepping up, and B, being patient with us as well.
I think my biggest concern going forward, and it's something that we've talked about, is when do we reverse these? What triggers a reversal? And that's, that's the uncertainty that business owners and employees that are not working right now are trying to answer that same question. And unfortunately, none of us have a good answer. That's the hard part. But I think this version of two, we'll call it three, it gives us some leeway and some flexibility in how we treat that, to make, help us to act quicker when that time arises. And if you're a business owner and you disagree with us keeping this out, I'd like to hear your point of view and come in and tell me why this should be changed. I think that would be beneficial for the entire council to hear that, so.
Can I make a comment, please?
Councilman Bunsonis, we can hear you.
Good. You know, I'm not sure we're going to get it right. This is a huge issue, and depending upon which side you fall on, whether you think business should open up, or you think we should increase the restrictions, we're not going to get it right in many people's minds. And I'm not necessarily thinking in that direction. What I'm thinking is, one, our healthcare professionals are at risk. And we've had a lot of response, and I should probably back out, a lot is probably stretching. We've had four doctors, I've had four doctors make comments regarding COVID-19. They're concerned. And they do give us very good information in the severity of this. And so I think our mission is really about protecting our healthcare facilities. Do we know that we're going to have a huge rush? We don't know, but we're preparing for that. And we have, and a way to prepare is to reduce the numbers that our hospitals could potentially see. One of the encouraging things in this past week, because I've helped people with this, is the, some of the stimulus package is getting out through the banks, the information, the applications, PPP or disaster recovery, whatever it might be. People are taking advantage of it. They're being informed of the availability. They're taking a look at it, they're working hard. I think they believe it's something that can get them through this period of time. So if you do not know anything about that, then you need to contact your bank and ask them about it, because it could really help your situation. So, you know, I think the point is, from my perspective, is protecting the healthcare system of Aberdeen in this region. We have, as you heard from Todd Forkel, a limited amount of supplies, a limited amount of beds, ventilators, and those things are very important in the fight against this. So as Clint said, I would ask for patience from the community. This is something that we haven't seen in our lifetime, and if we continue to physical distance, we will get through this sooner than later. So please, please help us out.
Thank you, Councilman Olson. Or is Dave on the line? I see his name on the little card in there.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment, please?
It's all yours.
We are considering ordinance number three, correct?
That's right.
First reading.
Right. And in light of Councilmember Bunsonis's remarks, which I totally agree with, by passing this ordinance, I would not want the public to think that we are suddenly considering removing some of these restrictions, which we haven't even gotten in place until tomorrow night. I just don't want that perception by the public that we are somehow lessening these restrictions, because we're in a very serious time right now for the next few weeks. And our restrictions are very important to our community here in Aberdeen. And I just don't want the public to misinterpret our involvement in this ordinance three, which will be necessary at some point. Certainly not now, but at some point, yes, we'll start removing some of these restrictions. But that's in the future. We have to get over this serious nature that we're facing right now.
Thank you, Councilman Olson. Dave Lunsman, are you have anything to add?
Just that I think I agree with the, with the situation that we're in. We got to take this serious. We jumped up to 13. We're heading in the wrong direction. If we don't take these actions now, I think we're going to be in trouble. And once we start sliding down that hill, it's going to be a slippery slope for everybody. I agree with Mr. Bunsonis that our healthcare workers are going to be overrun. Also, the law enforcement is going to be overrun, our ambulance crews are going to be overrun, and we're going to run out of equipment quickly. And there isn't any to be had anywhere. We've been looking for a lot of different supplies, and suppliers are either laughing at us or telling us, we'll see you maybe in June, July, or August with these supplies, and that's if we're lucky. So the biggest thing is we, the citizens have to do what they've been doing, and some of them that aren't listening, they're going to need to stay home, they're going to need to do this for a short while, and we'd be much better off. So I am going to be in for, voting for this ordinance. I think it's best for the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. And I think that everyone has had a chance to speak except you. Alan, do you have a comment?
Yeah, sure. I think, you know, we've spoken to the seriousness of the situation. I think that's abundantly clear. I think we need to, when we return on a weekly basis, be very open-minded, using data that's available, input from citizens. We'll know when we reach that point, when we can be selective about removing some of these business categories. But there needs to be definitely some sympathy for those businesses. Some are being just decimated. I know that doesn't necessarily trump the need for the distancing and other protocols. My observation is that citizens are doing an outstanding job, wholeheartedly with very few exceptions. There are a few, but in the main, Aberdeenans are doing a very good job to be compliant. And I think that should be underscored. That's an important message of appreciation. The numbers certainly will grow. We're at 13 today, I understand, added four from yesterday. Just because it's an invisible enemy, it's certain that there are a number of other people who will be added to those case numbers, and that's unfortunate. And we, you know, hope and pray for good health for those who are afflicted and those who will be. But there needs to be a level-headedness also among the council, that we are responsive and take a look at this on a weekly basis and, you know, not just have the gas pedal pushed to the floor, but are also considering all the effects. It's a multitude of effects, it's multifaceted. So I've had a lot of input this week both ways. I just wanted to put that point of view there.
Thank you, Councilman. And yeah, I think that it's a, I think that everyone can kind of, you know, give credence to the fact that it's a challenging issue, it's been very difficult, and there's a lot of factors on, on all sides. First and foremost, we must be aware of the health impact of the people of this community, and then obviously, secondarily, their financial well-being, and hopefully the fact that we can jumpstart this economy back up once the air clears a little bit. We've got a motion from Ronean and a second from Rux on the first reading of emergency ordinance.
We are at the amendment.
Oh, that, the red lines, yep. To include the red line amendments, were those specified to the satisfaction? Okay. So I'll take a roll call vote for the amendment first. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronean.
Hi.
Lunsman.
Hi.
Reif.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Bunsonis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Rux.
Hi.
Mayor Shawman.
Hi. Amendment does carry. Next.
And I'd like to offer one more amendment to this.
What have you got?
Can you pull it up, Ron? Basically, I'm just adding, I don't, I don't want to do it to ordinance number two because it could be a drastic change, which would move it to another reading, but this would be a perfect opportunity. I don't know if you can pull it up.
Oh, if Austin would switch to the screen.
Basically, under the violation part, after class two misdemeanor, it put, and may result in suspension or revocation of any license issued by the city.
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion from Rux and a second from Ronean to include Councilman Rux's language, be it further ordained that a violation of this ordinance shall be class two misdemeanor with the additional language and may result in suspension or revocation of any license issued by the city. Carl, give me a roll call vote on that amendment.
Councilmember Rux.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Bunsonis.
Are we going to have some discussion on this motion?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I thought so, but.
Can you give us a reason why you think this is appropriate?
One thing that probably came to my head is, is that by suspending a license for a lot of establishments, you can cease the operations immediately without, but also it does add another layer of urgency, I believe, in this situation, that if there is not just a class two misdemeanor or a $500 fine, let's say, or 30 days in jail, that someone could possibly have their license suspended or potentially revoked at some point, which there would, a whole nether process to go through that. But it could add a little bit of sense of urgency that, A, we're serious, and B, there could be further consequences if you don't follow.
I guess my question to Attorney Wager is, what's his opinion?
Councilman, my opinion is that this is a good change, that there will be the potential of some licensed businesses that might get stiff-necked in response, and the class two misdemeanor may not carry the appropriate deterrent effect. So the potential suspension or revocation of a license would be a good add.
Can you tell me what, please tell us what, so, what businesses do currently have licenses?
For example, there is some language regarding, I should say, there is a little bit of conflict whether, whether an alcohol license is issued by the city or the state, but we'll use that as an example. For example, a casino that refuses to abide by the ordinance may choose to just take the citation for the class two misdemeanor if that was the case. This at least would put in place, up, I'm sorry, would implicate and put in as a consequence the potential suspension of their license. When I'm talking about license, I mean the alcohol portion of their license. Every casino is required to have a malt beverage license, I believe.
So what other businesses listed here would be affected?
Bars, restaurants, casinos, breweries, any, having an alcohol license that is supervised by the city. So any of those. To the extent that you have, any establishment that is operating with a alcohol license could potentially look at suspension. could potentially look at, uh, suspension or revocation as a consequence of a violation.
Ron, how about the hair salons and massage therapies and those types of businesses?
Those businesses do not.
Not have a license.
Have city let issued licenses.
Primarily the alcohol license, which would be affecting.
The only other license that I guess I'll, I'll put this out, the only other license that would be implicated at all is the daycares, but those have been accepted.
Right. Anyone else have any questions for this? Sorry about jumping right to the vote. All right, Carl.
So I guess I do have, um, so this doesn't exclude them from doing curbside?
That's correct. That's correct. They would otherwise be. This would only be in a case of a violation of the ordinance. Right, this would be a violation.
But a city could suspend the license and thereby just sort of shut the business down much quicker than, let's say, maybe even going through a process. It gives that other thing where someone may just say, well, I'm going to take the fine. Nope, your license is also suspended, which would cease their operations if they fail to follow the guidelines.
Would this be our discretion? Correct, correct. And I should say that, in my opinion, this is a, uh, a slower acting deterrent. Uh, we know that the, the process to suspend or revoke is a, is necessarily a complicated and slower one. Uh, but most, most operators do not wish to, to do anything to potentially compromise their license. So I think this is, if the, if the goal here is to try to get compliance, this, this assists in that goal.
So Josh, when you say we, you're talking about the council? Are you talking about the city?
The council.
Is that your understanding then as well, Ron?
Right, the, the ones that I visited with you about as far as the alcohol, those would go through the council.
So that would be, uh, I've come to a vote to the council to decide to revoke a license or suspend, right?
Yeah.
And they'd have to have that hearing in that, too. So they'd have their day in front of us to speak to us, and we'd vote from there. And I think in our, my history, we've only revoked maybe one or two malt beverages license in my period of time, so.
Dave, anything else to follow up with that?
So really what we're doing is sending a shot across the bow of two businesses. Is that right?
Or any other business who may think that because two businesses may get away with it or may, um, push the envelope, this would probably deter some.
So we're identifying essentially two that are non-compliant anecdotally right now, right?
Trying to remember who those two are.
Carl, start that roll call vote back over for me, please. I had a, a motion from Olson and a second from Ronan to add the language that, uh, Councilman Olson had concocted about removing licenses.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got, uh, any other discussion on the first reading of ordinance number three in and of itself? We've all had a chance to chime in, but does anyone have any final words to add? With the two amendments, we'll take our voice vote for, excuse me, the roll call vote for, uh, first reading of ordinance number three. Carl, give me the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got discussion and possible first reading and passage of Resolution 200401R extending ordinance number 200302, known as COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Number One. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, resolution before you is what you'll be seeing routinely now that we've got adopted ordinance and ordinances potentially. But in order for ordinance number one to survive tonight's meeting, this council would need to, uh, approve Resolution, uh, 20 dash 04 dash 01R to do two things. Affirm the continued existence of the public health emergency for COVID-19. And number two, affirm the social distancing measures set forth in paragraphs one and two of ordinance number one, uh, that they are necessary for the prevention and spread within the city of the, of the contagious virus. So by, uh, by approving the resolution, uh, approving first reading and passage of the resolution, I want to make sure that we use that language. Uh, the council would extend this to the next, uh, meeting of the council, which will be tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ron. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Rux and a second for Ronan to, uh, continue the approval of Resolution 200401. Does anyone have any comments to make? Or we'll take a roll call vote. Carl, please.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request for denial of property tax abatement for the property and city limits. Denial of the tax for 419 South Dakota Street as recommended by the assessor's office. Carl, what can you tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you see in the handouts, the county assessor forwarded this, excuse me, county auditor's office forwarded this to us. And in the documentation, the county auditor is recommending denial of this. Uh, it looks like there's quite a few issues going on with this property, but it looks to me like the, uh, county assessor has said that the time has run on a couple of those issues. And so, um, the reassessment that he is asking for would is going to be applicable for next year, but the others should be denied according to them.
Move to deny abatement.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronan and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have any questions for Carl while we're talking about the topic? Carl, give me a roll call vote for denial of the property tax abatement.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to purchase three HPE DL360 Generation 10 servers for the Computer Services. Possible approval to purchase the servers from One Neck IT in the amount of $31,106.84. Carl, since Austin's in the back, why don't you tell us about those computers?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll just bring Austin up because he can explain it better. No, I'll take it. Again, these are servers that we'll be using to replace some older servers that we have in place. We do have it budgeted in the 2020 budget, and we, uh, are buying these. The prices are equitable to the, um, state contract.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Reif to make the purchase of these computers. Does anyone have anything to say before we take the vote? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote for that purchase.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got an agreement to amend the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, project for the South Dakota Department of Transportation for work on the 15th Avenue rec trail from Dakota Street to Second Street North. Possible approval to authorize city manager to sign amendment number one to the project agreement with the Department of Transportation for 15th Avenue Trail Department. And, uh.
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sounds good, Lynn. Go ahead.
Uh, this housekeeping measure is for the city to stay eligible for state grant funds for this project. The total project was $404,000. State share grant funds are $320,000, and the city's participating share is $84,000. And we have $10,000 of work remaining to close out the project in 2020.
Move approved.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronan and a second from Johnson to amend that agreement. Does anyone have any questions for Lynn? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city's bill list, approval of bill list for April 6th, 2020. Probably can't see it on your screen here, but I've got no amendments to that list, and all of you should have been included in the packet. Can I get a motion to pay those bills?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Rux and a second from Ronan. Carl, give me a roll call vote to make the bills, please.
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Stane.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got city managers report. Lynn, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. The only thing I'd like to highlight within the manager's report, I provided a report from Kelly Jorgensen from AGP, and they continue to monitor with hydrogen sulfide gases. And, uh, they make adjustments, but they are continuing to work on it. We don't have a perfect system yet, but it's, the gases have been reduced substantially from where we started.
Thank you, Lynn. And I want to take this moment to thank AGP for their, their duty, full service on that, improving that problem pretty much from the day that it was brought to their attention. Does anyone else have anything to add before we adjourn here for the evening? Councilman Ronan.
Thank you, sir. Uh, actually, I would ask the city manager if he could address, uh, what the plans are with, uh, Wiley Park in view of, uh, of COVID-19. Specifically, are there plans to open or perhaps not open Storybook Land?
Well, Storybook Land, the probability will be that it'll probably not be open. Uh, Mark and I are going to discuss, uh, as to whether we should cancel, uh, the summer programs also. But we almost certain that Wiley Park will not be, I mean, Storybook Land, Wiley Park will not be open, uh, at this time for many months.
Thank you.
The executive order from the governor extended the time period for distancing from May 1st to May 31st. And so that gives you a little different perspective as to what we're looking at. And so we have to determine how that's going to affect the swimming pool, how it's going to affect park programs. But the probability, when you look at the May 31st is that it'll probably prevent many of those programs happening this summer, not lest things change overnight.
Thank you, Lynn. And I also want to say that, uh, when a number of the people from our community brought up their, uh, their observance that of the substantial amount of usage of playground equipment, which could be a place for potential spread of this virus, um, we worked with Lynn and, and park manager Mark to, uh, to close those down in very brief time. So appreciate that. Lynn, um, did anyone else have anything else to add? Dave, did you say something? Councilman Bunsoness, floor is yours.
Couple of questions, one for Lynn, Carl, and another one for Chief McNeil. I believe he's still on the line. First question is, uh, when will you be able to tell the impact to sales tax?
Well, probably the last week in April. Uh, Carl did provide me a report for December, uh, January, February. And actually, we were experiencing an increase at that point. And so we want to see what March revenues are doing. Actually, I know that Casey Weismanel contacted me earlier today to ask, you know, what we may program for the future. Until we see those March revenues, we can't really predict what's going to come in the future.
Yeah, I just think that's something that we need to, uh, we need to be aware of as soon as possible. So just curious on when you thought that we'd be able to see those numbers? If there, if there is any impact, I would suspect there would be. I guess I would like to hear from Chief McNeil how, uh, his, uh, staff is, is handling this, um, this issue, being on the front lines.
Certainly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so from the very beginning of this pandemic, uh, some critical resources, the city manager and the fire department put together along with some other, uh, city officials have really been beneficial. The Keith Sharinsky has worked with the fire department, uh, our meeting with, with the city manager, human resource, some of the other officers, just kind of putting some, some things together to be able to help our officers with screening. Uh, the PPE that we put together, the emergency management help has been instrumental. Um, you know, and then we received a lot of guidance from the state. The Safety Benefits Group, the Public Assurance Alliance has given us a lot of good, uh, policy guidance and a lot of things that have kind of helped us navigate this. So we're really working with, uh, out of a reactive policing model. Uh, we've really done a lot of things to minimize our contact with citizens, but at the same time trying to provide, uh, you know, police services as best we can. Um, we've, we've, um, done a lot, handled a lot of calls for service over the phone. We still try to give as much, uh, service as we can, but you know, we're using the distancing piece. So the routine calls for service, we're trying to handle a lot just by utilizing the phone. And, um, you know, there's a lot of things that we're, we're doing in a, in the department. Uh, we're doing much more cleaning. We've set up some structures in the building that have, uh, put partitions. So if we have to do a face-to-face interview with a person or interaction, we have, uh, basically a screen, much like you've seen at a grocery store or a place that does business, kind of to protect the employee.